Welcome. Regular session, Mayor and City Council meeting, six P M. Wednesday, November fifth, two thousand and twenty-five, City Hall, Council Chambers called this meeting to order. Would you please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance? Kramer, does the honor?
Certainly.
Thank you, Mayor.
I pledge allegiance to the Constitution of America, and to the Constitution of the citizens of this country.
Thank you. Okay, I want to make one change that's on the on the agenda. Item four is going to be moved to item five, and item five is going to be moved to item four. We have item three, proclamation, Ms. Councilwoman.
Yes, sir. The proclamation, whereas throughout the history of our great nation, courageous men and women have answered the call to serve in the armed forces of the United States, defending liberty, promoting peace, and protecting the values upon which our country was founded. And whereas the city of Nogales, Arizona, proudly joins communities across the nation in recognizing November as Veterans and Military Families Month, honoring the service, sacrifices, and enduring strength of America's veterans, service members, and their families. And whereas the families of our military members demonstrate unwavering support, resilience, and courage, standing beside their loved ones through deployments, relocation, and the many challenges of military life. And whereas veterans continue to serve our community long after their military careers have ended, contributing their skills, leadership, and dedication to civic life, education, business, and public service throughout Nogales and Santa Cruz County. And whereas it is both fitting and proper that the city of Nogales pay tribute to those who have served to the and to their families, whose sacrifices ensure that future generations may continue to live in freedom and peace. Now, therefore, Jorge Maldonado, Mayor of the city of Nogales, Arizona, do hereby proclaim the month of November two thousand and twenty-five as Veterans and Military Families Month.
Thank you. Do you have time for somebody?
It's going to be for the American Legion.
Okay, thank you. Does the honor? Next, we move to recognition. A, city of Nogales recognizes and commends Carlos Ibarra for his outstanding artistic achievements and dedication to enhancing the culture of life in our community, and also Madison Nicole Mascareña. Go ahead, Councilwoman Montiel.
Thank you, Mayor Maldonado, and thank you all for being here tonight. I'm going to start off with Carlos Ibarra. Hello, Carlos. If you could please come up. Yes, please come up. Yeah, if you could. You're shy. No, you're an artist. You're not shy. If you can go to the podium. So Carlos Ibarra is an American artist from Nogales, Arizona, born and raised in Nogales. He began studying graphic design in nineteen ninety-four. We know how old you are. But chose to pursue fine arts instead. His first work, he first worked for many years as a commissioned artist, mainly painting portraits in oil. Later, he continued his studies at the U of A, where he earned a Bachelor of Fine Arts in Painting and Drawing in two thousand and eleven. His work often reflects his personal experience growing up with both American and Mexican roots. He is interested in images that bring together different parts of his identity and community. Carlos has shown his work to collectors across the United States, and you might want to tell me your most recent work in Washington. He is currently focusing on painting murals. He believes that murals allow his ideas to take on a larger and more public life. Along with his mural work, he continues to paint portraits, which remains his lifelong passion. And one of the reasons I asked Carlos to be here is because I've known Carlos all most of my life, and one of his first drawings or paintings, I should say, that he painted my daughter. And she was four years old, and as some of you that have been in my house have seen that she's at the entrance of the house, your work, and every time we have people over at her house, they always ask who who painted that drawing. And she was, if you recall, four years old. And for me, I treasure that, and I will treasure it for the rest of the life. In fact, she wants it back. She wants it at her home in San Francisco, and I said that she can't have it until I die. So one of the reasons I also asked him to be here is if you saw his most recent work is downtown, can tell you a little bit about what he did. It's amazing. Every time I passed her there, I know that you had just your event the other day, and we had so many people just glance at it, and it's it's amazing what you've done. You've spoken about ambos Nogales, and for us, that's what we're all about here. And so for it's it's my honor, Carlos, to give you this outstanding artistic achievement certificate dedicated to enhancing the cultural life of this community. From the mayor and the council, again, we commend you. We admire what you have done, and you've put spotlights on Nogales on different occasions. And if you will, before I give you a certificate, if you could talk a little bit about what you just did back in the east.
The east. I spent a few months in New York City, actually. I do have some paintings in D C, private collectors. But this was an opportunity to go paint at the Metropolitan Museum of Art for four months. I love New York City. I'm wearing a New York City shirt, especially today, because I'm excited about what happened yesterday. And and yeah, it was just a it was a dream to be able to stand in the galleries of the Met, and I got to choose the it was a copy. I was painting a copy of a Vermeer, who's a, I think, my favorite of all the artists of all time. And so just to be able to stand in front of, I think it's like five Vermeers on one wall, and work on the one that I was working on, it was it was great. It was a great and meeting a lot of people, enjoying New York City. It was a great opportunity and had a lot of fun, and eventually had to come back. It's too expensive.
Well, they say they have a new mayor there that's going to make it cheaper to live there, right?
That's what I'm hoping.
Yeah, we're hopeful for those of us that love New York and like to visit, right? So I want to present to you this certificate. If we can all just kind of give it to Carlos for his amazing work. And for those of you that haven't seen his mural, please go. I'm sure it's next to Cinderella, to to the south of Cinderella. So it's our honor to present this to you, Carlos.
Thank you so much. Thank you to everybody. Thank you.
He's shy. He's a shy artist. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you so much. Thank you. Appreciate it. Appreciate it.
Congratulations. It's my pleasure. Thank you, Carlos. And our next one is a is a little one, and but with a with a huge imagination. Let me introduce to you, if you can come up, Madison. Yes. So Madison, yeah, Mr. Bonias will help you there. And it's our tradition since Mayor Maldonado has been here in office to recognize the incredible people we have living in Nogales, and not just living, but people that are that were born and raised in Nogales, that have gone to further opportunities, but their roots are here in Nogales. And we have artists, we have we have writers, we have publishers, we have doctors and so forth, that have done amazing things. And and I commend our mayor for allowing me to recognize amazing talent that we have that come from this community. And one of them, and she's small, but she has this huge imagination. And one of the reasons that it caught my attention is because her mother, who works for the city of Nogales, and and she she posted this on Facebook. And I thought it was amazing. And of course, you know, just by seeing this, that this took a lot of work. And I thought it was commendable. And she drew Pimera Alta, which is now a museum, of course, but it was the old city hall, like we like to say here in Nogales. And Madison, according to what your mom said, Madison, and and you could tell me if she's right, okay? And that's okay if there's so many people. But she says that you pass through it all the time. You drive through it when you when you're in the car, right? You don't drive yet, but that you admire the building, just like so many of us do. There's so much history there, right? And that you went home and basically just drew it on your own, you know, without having to be in front of it. What you could ask Carlos, sometimes artists need to have their their person or what they're drawing in front of them. But you actually just drew it out of your imagination, and you used, of course, this is water?
Yeah.
Yes. So tell us a little bit why you did that.
I made that painting because it whenever I go past it, it's a really beautiful building. And I always think that it's really beautiful and it needs to be recognized. So I I thought that I should draw it someday, and I painted it.
Great. Well, you did a marvelous job, and that's why you're here tonight. Thank you so much. You keep imagining things and drawing things because, you know, you'll end up like Carlos. And yeah, you'll be an amazing artist. So I want to also give you a on behalf of Mayor Maldonado and us, a certificate for, I'm sure you have many of these certificates at home. Yeah, and this is for outstanding artistic talent and for representing the creativity of the youth in this community. Community. Thank you, Madison. I love your name. And here's your certificate. Congratulations. And then. She's ready to be a politician. You can tell already without handshake. She's out there. And Madison, we have a little something for Mayor Maldonado. And then we can we keep this now, or do we need to return it to you? Yeah, okay. Okay. Well, thank you so much. We will make sure that Mayor Maldonado puts it up in his office.
Thank you.
Thank you. And thank you, Mr. Wise and Mrs. Wise and Mama. Thank you so much. Good night.
Thank you. Good job.
Excuse me? Okay. He want Mr. Bohorkis wants to buy it for five hundred dollars. Okay, well.
Larry wants seven. You got seven. There we go. Hey, do I want a? I want a. Here we go.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Buenas noches. Thank you.
Now, now we go to number five, presentations. A, presentation from Josh Rubin will provide an update and update on the Port Authority Quarterly Report, Nogales. Go ahead, Mr. Rubin.
Thank you, Mayor and council members. Good evening. My name is Josh Rubin. I am the chairman of the Greater Nogales Santa Cruz County Port Authority, and here to give our update. Before I start off, I do want to mention that our updates are sent over to the city members at every single month and distributed hopefully to every member of the council as well. But first, I wanted to start off by thanking thanking the city for the continued partnership. The city of Nogales has always been at the center of what we do, and everything I share tonight reflects how we're working together to strengthen this community's position as one of the most vital border gateways in North America. Over the past few months, the Port Authority has been working on several key fronts locally, nationally, and internationally, but always with one goal in mind, to make sure Nogales's voice is heard, respected, and prioritized. Going into my report now. When Union Pacific and Norfolk Southern announced their merger, we quickly moved to issue a formal letter of support, not just to welcome the merger, but to make sure that Nogales was not forgotten in the process. Rail access is vital to our competitiveness and ensuring the new company keeps Nogales on the map. We also issued a letter of support, this time for Unisource and specifically for the Unisource Santa Cruz North Reliability Project, in effort to directly impact our city. If we all remember a couple of years ago when we lost power for substantial amount of time, we want to make sure that doesn't happen again. So Unisource has confirmed they're not building a new route, but rather adding a second circuit on the existing transmission line. This means greater capacity and reliability for Nogales, a stronger power grid without new land impacts. We've also been busy raising Nogales's visibility beyond Arizona. We hosted the World Press Institute delegation welcoming journalists from nine countries, from Finland to Italy to Kenya to Argentina, giving them the firsthand look at what Nogales's role in global trade is. We joined also high-level decisions with Attorney General Chris Mays on tariffs, Mexican Ambassador Esteban Montezuma, and U S Ambassador Ron Johnson to Mexico. We also joined the Canadian Arizona Business Council, because Nogales is part of a North American corridor, not just a border crossing. And we are proud to welcome six members from Congress from the Problem Solvers Caucus. If no one's familiar with this is, this is the way government, I think, should really work. Members from Republicans and Democrats coming together to listen to true issues in figuring out solutions and not being divided. This Problem Solvers Caucus was led by Congressman Juan Cescimani. They saw firsthand the coordination and professionalism that has defined Nogales and manages and how we manage our trade. On infrastructure front, we've been engaging with ADOT's multimodal planning team, the new administrador de Aduana and Sonora in Nogamec, which operates the Mariposa Corridor on the Mexican side. We're pushing forward, planning the modernization of I nineteen interchange at Ruby Road and Rio Rico Drive, so that as trade grows, local traffic moves more efficiently and safely. We are also active in the Arizona freight state freight study, which guides statewide investment through two thousand and fifty, and we're making sure Nogales is front and center. We're asking ADOT to consider multimodal alternatives, which include rail, truck, and logistics, so we remain competitive with our sister states of Texas, New Mexico, and California. Another exciting development is our region in our for our region is the creation of the Santa Cruz County's new Economic Development Director position. This role is a big step forward for aligning local efforts. We look forward to working closely with the county and with the the city to synchronize recruitment strategies, share data, and build a stronger regional identity. Together, we can position Nogales and Santa Cruz County as Arizona's most coordinated cross-border investment zone, where where business attraction, infrastructure, and workforce development move in the same direction. We continue monitoring the policies that directly impact Nogales from tariffs, from the tomato trade to the new world screw worm affecting cattle crossings. These aren't abstract policy issues. They touch our farms, our warehouses, and our families every day. We've also joined forces with our sister ports of Douglas and San Luis through a webinar with the Arizona Mexico Commission, Arizona Department of Transportation, and the Arizona Commerce Authority to promote the Arizona advantage, telling companies that Arizona's ports, and Nogales especially, offer a safe, fast, and smart crossing experience. Finally, our organization marked a major milestone, the Port Authority's twentieth anniversary celebration in Toubac. More than a hundred and twenty stakeholders, members that are here today, joined us as well, including Councilwoman Parada, Mayor Maldonado, Councilwoman Montiel, and and Councilmember Doyle. To celebrate two decades of success and collaboration, it was a reminder that Nogales progress is built on partnership. Nogales isn't just part of our mission. It is our mission. Every meeting we attend, every letter we send, every project we support, every funding request we make, it's all about ensuring Nogales stays in the frontland of trade, logistics, and opportunity. Thank you, Mayor and Council, for the continued leadership and trust. Together, we keep building a stronger, smarter, and globally connected Nogales, and I'm here for any questions. Thank you, ma'am.
Anybody have a question? Ms. Montiel, go ahead.
Well, thank you, Josh, for being here today. Just so that the public knows that we fund our fifty thousand dollars a year to the Port Authority. And we don't specifically, in the contract, contract as it is written, say exactly how you use how you are supposed to use the money, if you will. But I I I wanted to ask you a little bit about, you just mentioned that you were collaborating with, I turned over to Askana, because I was trying to follow you, but you're very you're very fast, Josh, but you were talking a little.
That's the Cuban side of me. I'm sorry.
It's the what?
The Cuban side of me.
Is it? Okay, that's great. Yeah, that's true. But one of the things I wanted to ask you is, how are you collaborating? Because we're also working with the Chamber of Commerce, okay? And it's important, because we also fund them taxpayers' money, fifty thousand dollars. How are you collaborating with the chamber so that we don't have different, you know, ships going different places, if you will? How do you collaborate with a chamber, because they have a strong tourism component within the chamber? How how is the Port Authority collaborating with that entity?
We do have the chamber that is an ex officio member of the Port Authority, where their voice and their comments and their issues and topics that they need can be voiced, so we could work on them together. On projects, for example, the deep downtown revitalization project, it's very key as to the people that we bring in here to work with the chamber, to ensure that one thing is we're the promoters and try bringing them, and then the chamber is the one that captures them and and gets them into the city. We're not going to be the ones that are going to be putting the business into a location or a spot. That's that's the chamber's activity a hundred percent. That's that's what they're experts at. Our job is to help in getting the areas of infrastructure and the roads and the projects, so that the businesses, when they do come to seek the chamber, they have that type of stuff. So we work one with the city to understand where the challenges are, to get funding and and make those requests. Go with our Congress and our senators to request the funding, so that we can have the infrastructure, so when those big box stores or big companies want to come here, they have that 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 opening in there. I guess that would be one example, as well as the deconsceney port of entry that we're working on, on trying to get that remodeled, to get trade, more people to come into our community at a faster pace, but not dropping down in the area of security. So having more non-intrusive inspections to ensure that traffic is flowing smoother, C B P is aware that what's coming across the border is safety or is is safe and secure, so that they can come and spend money in this community as well, which is where the chamber is is the strength part, is bringing those businesses and bringing that attraction in here for people to go and shop.
Okay. And and one more question. So along with what you were talking a little bit about, so how I I read in the Nogales International a little bit about how the mine is going to fund a position that deals with economic development. Correct me if I'm wrong.
They're going to fund the first year.
Uh huh.
Then the second year drops to seventy-five percent, then it drops to fifty percent, then it drops to twenty-five percent, and then the county needs to figure out how to fund it themselves. That was actually part of one of our requests to the county and.
That's what could be sustainable. I get that part. But the part that that I guess I'm I'm trying to understand is how it will that position coordinate or collaborate with the city and the and the chamber? Do you have any ideas, or do you think that it will or be its own entity?
If you ask me, my opinion, the city should try collaborating directly with the county in this position, as well as the chamber should try collaborating directly with it. From my understanding of what the county is going to be doing is they're going to have members from the chamber sitting on this board that will be sitting on the committee with the Economic Development Director, as well as us, as well as people from the city, as well as people from Sonorita, as well as people from Toubac, from all over the county, to sit here and guide this individual or this firm that will be managing the economic development for the community.
And and thirdly, just so that we don't, you know, I've always talked about that missing link, you know? People out there say, you know, we got to improve the economic situation in Nogales. Tourism is a big factor. You know, it's a beautiful place here, and and of course, we 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 look at our bed tax revenue coming in, which we count on on a lot. But I I was wondering about that missing leak, you know? When when can we address it? And I guess we're addressing it in the best way that we can. And so if we could just all kind of put it together and not go in different directions, I think that is in the best interest of the of the community as a whole. So, thank you.
If you if you allow me to add, Councilwoman, the county has, as well as the Port Authority, as well as the city, have tried pushing the two to work together in this position. We are a small community. We're a small county. We're a small city. And it would be very beneficial for our community that we have the city and the county work together and not just have it be two separate entities and have something that unites our county together. South thirty-two, or not South thirty-two, sorry. Santa Cruz County has mentioned that they're doing this as being the holders of it, as in like, hey, it's going to be here, but this isn't for the county. It's for everybody that is here. It's it's not just for outside of Nogales. Their focus is, hopefully, that it benefits Nogales just as much as it benefits Rio Rico, just as much as it's going to benefit Elgin. It is what the focus is of this position. It's not county-focused. It's county-focused, I guess. It's hard to say it that way, but it's it's not just for the county. You're welcome, ma'am.
Like like I say, the city's in the county, and the county's in the city, right, Jess?
Yes, sir.
Thank you. Any other questions? Go ahead, Vice Mayor.
Hello, Josh. I asked the same question when you had the Port Authority meeting, the the last time you had it here. And as far as expansion of the deconsceney port of entry, what is the target date to begin the demolition? And how far north is that going to start?
Well, we need the government to open up first. Just a little sidebar there. No, in in all reality, right now, the feasibility study has been completed. Luckily, that was completed before the government shutdown. That's the first step. Once the feasibility is done, that's for the federal government eyes. No one gets to see that outside of the federal government, and I believe it's only DHS and G S A and certain members and other agencies in the government get to see it. Then what it comes out is the E I S, similar to what we're seeing with South thirty-two right now, the E I S program, and and everyone gets to talk. When that comes out, hopefully, at the end of this year or the beginning of next year, that's when we get to see what the real footprint is. We don't know. We only know the speculations of what they've kind of said, and the idea is the railroad, Burger King, McDonald's, and like that kind of area, but we really don't know. We won't know until the E I S comes out. There was a goal to try getting the funding done this last fiscal year. Unfortunately, it wasn't able to be passed, so we're now on normal track to hopefully this next this fiscal year that we're in right now, the funding can start, and we we won't be seeing construction at least five years out from that. It will be a three-phase project. We're looking at around one point five to two billion dollars just for the port of entry. We're still going to need another probably five hundred million that's going to come from the state for all the infrastructure, the way I nineteen is going to look, the way Grand is going to look. One of the biggest pushes that the Port Authority is doing is to ensure that traffic doesn't just go to I nineteen. We want traffic to be able to flow into downtown Nogales like it like it is in this way right now, but that works. We also want overpasses and and bridges to get things over the over the train, since we know the train's not going to be moving anytime soon. So we know it's going to be the three-phase project, similar to what happened when Mariposa was done, and we're looking at anywhere from seven to ten years from start to finish of construction because of those phases. And every phase is a different funding approval crunch, I guess, is the way they'll say it.
Yeah, and the reason I ask that is because the city has some special interest there and right on the corner of Crawford and and Grand and Arroyo, we have that little small park with the statue of the newspaper boy. And the city, along with the Chamber of Commerce, have been looking into renovating those parks. And I just, we just want to have an I want to have an idea of what we can do to that corner before we can start investing in into it. So five to ten years is a long time, so I think we could do some cosmetic work on that.
I I would I would definitely love to go walk that area with you, sir, and see it and see your ideas, and then and then make sure that whatever we do do, we can even express it to G S A and to the proper teams to to see if it could be incorporated somehow or whatever it is. But I'd love to walk that area with you.
Thank you.
Thanks, sir.
Thank you. Go ahead, Mr. Bonia.
Josh, I have a question on on the previous subject that you were talking about, the South thirty-two and and the county and how they're going to. When was that decision made that the county would oversee this this whole project?
County made the decision with South thirty-two two months ago? Was it two? Yeah, two months ago. We have a member here from this, from the county. They made the decision to do it because there was no other movement. They worked with South thirty-two independently to to get this position going.
Don't you think that the city of Nogales would have had some input on that decision?
That would be a question, sir, you'd have to ask the county. I I wasn't involved in that process. That would be a question that you would need to discuss that with the county as to, from my understanding, they sat down with the county with the city, at least with the city manager, I believe, and I might be wrong. Like I said, I wasn't part of that, but that would be something that would need to be seen with the county.
Yeah, I I think that we should revisit that that decision, but that's a subject for another time.
We can definitely set that meeting up, sir.
Thank you.
Just let us know who you'd like to be at the meeting, and we can set it up for you.
Thank you, Josh. Any other questions? And I want to thank the Port Authority for everything you guys do. You know, you, for me, are one of the strongest menus, city, county, you know, state, federal, all entities that we have, and I, you know, I've been not just part of the Port Authority, but part of the community, working with you guys since probably since you started. So thank you, Josh. Thank you. Next, we have presentation B, presentation and remodeling of administration, building another. and other projects from Joe Legner, McKinstry and Agreements. Go ahead, sir.
Thank you. Last time we were here was May and that was for the design services and today we're providing an update of the construction-related activities. So I don't know if I'm set up to advance the slide here. There we go. Thank you very much. So we'll do a quick overview of our company, our construction team, provide an update on the administrative services building, which was the Chase Bank Building, the Public Safety Operations Center, which was the Armory, and the historic fire station and City Hall. Can't believe the presentation and the beautiful painting she made. That is, it's amazing. So that's today's presentation.
Picture higher.
What's that?
Picture higher.
Yeah. I was going to bid on the painting too, but it got a little pricey there, so. This is a record of the different entities that we work with around Arizona. We're excited to be a part of the community, join the Chamber of Commerce, and we're leveraging the relationships of suppliers and contractors that are also members of the chamber. So thank you for the continued support for us. Again, a quick note about McKinstry. We have 3,000 employees, 26 locations, we're about a billion dollars a year in revenue. And one of the things that makes this difference is we're focused, we try to be part of the community and impact the community, involve the community in the projects that we do for engineering and construction. So I'll move on pretty quickly here. One addition, last time we presented on May 7th, we introduced our team. Most of us were here in person. We have one new addition and his name is Shane Holt. He would be the superintendent for the project, so he'll be on site ensuring safety and quality and construction progress. He'll be the primary point of communication with our team should the council approve our contract. Again, Architect has done a fantastic job. Our design team has been very collaborative, very positive. One of the things we wanted to make sure you knew is that we anticipate spending a million dollars locally in the community on construction materials, housing, meals and other expenses. We've met with City Electric, other contractors in the process, and so we're excited to make a financial impact in the community. We obtained proposals from local contractors for drywall, tile, carpet. Unfortunately, the proposals that we got were more expensive than the ones out of Phoenix, which was a little bit surprising. Now, one of the things that we show at McKinstry is additional value. So we've given the city a discount of 10% on all the labor that McKinstry performs. We don't do that for, in fact, I think you're the only customer we've done that for to date. And the project value has ended up at 2.3 million. So I'm going to provide a couple slides here that show you. We picked out some colors. We're going to be using the existing lobby tile. We're using a beige and taupe color scheme. And then also on the first floor, I know all you drive by and you see the temporary fence around the structure. Inside, this is what it looks like. We've done the hazardous materials removal and abatement, and right now there's ductwork hanging. We had to seal up the building and make sure that during the remediation, we were safe. So relocating the business offices to the first floor of the structure. We're improving the bathrooms for Americans with disabilities. There'll be new office space, file space, secure spaces, the drive-through windows and conveying system. We're relocating the walk-up counters that are located here over there to save money. We're relocating the kiosk that's in front of the Public Works Building to be also in front of that building. There will be a drive-through, it was a Chase Bank Building, so there's a drive-through there for convenience as well. We're going to be resealing and restriping the parking lot so you have fresh lines to park within. And so this is how the first floor is going to look. Again, the public lobby is going to remain the lobby that was in the Chase Bank Building. We'll have access and bathroom on the main level for the public, but we're building new walls. We left as many of the existing walls as we could, but because it contained asbestos, we had to do some removal of that. So in a couple of pictures, you'll see wooden studs and metal studs, those had to be, the drywall had to be removed because of that. So that's the first floor, and here was what I was talking about. You see the wood frame walls. We're going to be reusing those walls. Part of our design team was to try and economize as much as we could. So that's where we, we'll be installing new lights, I'm sorry, new lights, new thermostats, a nice new large conference room on the second level. We're relocating some of the offices as well and making a nice break room. So on the second level, on the left-hand bottom side, there'll be a nice new break room for the employees, and then there's a really large, nice conference room on the bottom right side that will be available for use and potential rental. So a lot of office spaces, brand-new bathrooms. It'll be a beautiful building and very functional for the uses that we have been directed to by the city. This is the way the second floor looks. It was pretty much open before, and so again, the ductwork has remained. There were no walls here, so we didn't have to do a lot of removals, but we did remove the carpet and the glue. So that's the way the second floor looks. We do have a schedule. We're just a little bit behind schedule now, but our goal is to be complete by May. So actually, we're going to try and finish mid-April to exceed expectations, but we're putting down May as a completion date. Again, fairly extensive remodel, lots of new plumbing, new electrical, et cetera. So our service fee, the original project budget that you approved a long time ago, 2018, was 1.7 million. We did our design work, that's 205,000. We did the hazardous materials abatement and demolition, that was 167,000. So if you take those off, its remaining budget was 1.3 million. We estimated the construction services and have a proposal for 2.3 million dollars to perform all the services work that are required. Public Safety Operations Center, this is another one. The Arizona Department of Public Safety has given 50% grant along with matching funds from the city, and so we've got to complete that by June 1. Abatement has been completed, design is in development. We're currently working on that. We've got meetings scheduled to advance the design as quickly as we can. The planned construction completion will be June to obtain the grant funding. And we do have a floor plan there that's under construction in itself. We'll be using a cool gray and blue color palette at this point in time, that was the plan, to continue the theme of the blue and beige. And so we will be leaving the restrooms the same. Those are really for the Public Safety Operations Team and employees. These won't be public facilities, although the public may use them. And the historic fire station in City Hall, we're so excited. We don't have a contract here. We've donated about 80 hours to date between ourselves and our consultants. We're all so excited about this building, built in 1914, and working on that with your team. Design and scope development are under development. We've got, because there were no drawings for the building, we had to take a tape measure out and measure every little inch of the building. So the design services proposal will be forthcoming. In addition to volunteering our time to perform a lot of the design and the pre-work for the historic fire station in City Hall, we are also volunteering to sand the floors, do some painting and some remodeling as a community project at no cost to the city. And we're going to be leveraging as many community volunteers as we can safely. We'll have safety staff on there as people and individuals decide to support the volunteerism effort to make this building beautiful again. In addition to that, we've helped the city with several other projects here and there at no charge. So I wanted to just provide an update there. Here's the quick schedule. Again, I think we're about two weeks behind on this. We're working towards that, but because it's a historic building, we have to involve the Parks Department and special consultants to retain the original structure. I received a photo today of the building from the '30s and the '40s, and did you know originally that was tan brick building? They stuckled over it. Just a beautiful structure, so we're very excited to be working on that project. So I'll be open to any questions, should you have anything for me.
Councilman Pada.
Thank you, Joe, for the presentation, and I'm excited for all the projects and for the 10% discount to the city. That's a great help. Anything helps.
It's a big number.
Yeah. Looking forward to gathering the volunteers and working on that.
Thank you.
Thank you. Vice Mayor.
You didn't mention anything about the elevator there at that building. Is that going to be in use?
Yeah, so that will be a challenge. We've involved one contractor to date and mechanical, electrical, structural, civil, and architectural consultants so far. They donated their time as well. It's particularly troublesome because of the back of the structure and the front of the structure. It was never designed for access for people in wheelchairs and accessibility. And so there's going to be a substantial amount of rework for the front entry and for the back entry. So we looked at stairways and lifts. We looked at lifts inside the building, elevators outside the building, and the current thought is, and obviously we'll take your guidance, is a chairlift to go up the stairwell. So from the first level, when you get in, there's a door to your right, a door to your left, and three feet in front of you is the stairway that goes up, and it's eight foot wide. So it would accommodate a chairlift along one side. So that's the least-cost alternative, and I think it'll be functional. The top, the landing area, will accommodate a wheelchair and wheelchair access, but it will require substantial rework for the number of potential occupants for the ballroom and the bar area. So we've got to add bathrooms and toilets, and there's just not enough space in there. So there'll be some accommodations the historic preservation team will have to make in terms of allowing access for all the ADA. So again, just really excited. Chairlift, looks like it could be a good alternative because we just don't want to destroy the beauty of the exterior of the structure.
Well, I wasn't referring to the old City Hall building, I was referring to the Chase Building.
Oh, sorry. Man, I just went off on a tangent, didn't I? The existing elevator.
Well, thank you anyway for the information.
Oh, okay. Sorry, I'm an engineer, you know, I just followed that. Yeah, the existing elevator will remain. There is one light bulb that's out on a circuit panel, so we'll be fixing that so that that can be used as well for access between the first and second level. The public won't necessarily be going to the second level unless they're applying for a new job. There'll be some computer stations up there as well. So we're planning on reusing an existing elevator. Sorry, a different answer.
Thank you.
Good information on the old historic fire station.
Two for one.
You mentioned the conference room on the Chase, old Chase Building. What capacity is that going to have?
I believe it's about 20 people, 25 people.
Okay. Thank you. Any other questions? Go ahead, Ms. Montiel.
Presentation, I appreciate that. I just have one question on your timeline. I'm glad you provided a timeline.
Yes.
Yeah, because we can hold you to it, right?
Well, I'm two weeks behind already.
Yeah, we have our attorney here, so there's, you don't have any special like asterisk there, you know, that things can change, right? Like Salvador likes to say, the cost of materials changes all the time, so, you know? So one of the things is, what I see here in your timeline is that it's projected to be completed, am I, you know, correct me if I'm wrong, by August of 2026?
Yeah, so we're actually intending to use the existing electrical gear if it's permitted by the city planner and the inspectors up until May. So in our industry now, the electrical, switchgear, transformers and all that gear has extremely long lead times. And right now with the switchgear, we're anticipating that coming in after the building could be occupied and then do a weekend shutdown and switch over. So we're hoping that those lead times improve. Until we place an order, they won't give it to us. In fact, many of the contractors will only hold their prices open for 15 days, 20 days. It's, the market has gotten pretty crazy. So until we place that order, we really won't know. We believe the worst case is August. We want to get it all done and turned over to the city for occupancy in April if we can, but there's that likelihood.
Okay. Okay, and the reason I'm asking is because we've had issues sometimes with the cost of materials rising all the time.
Yep.
And I think it's fair to say that, you know, if we don't follow this timeline, and I know things can happen, the weather, I know, whatever comes with anything you're planning, things change, and faces change too, administrations change and stuff. So the projected is that it should be done around that time, 2026.
Yep.
But the cost of materials and so forth, is there a contract where it stays as is when you projected, when you submitted that bid to strategies and the attorneys?
Yes, good question. We offered the city a guaranteed maximum price proposal. So unless the city changes the scope, you're going to get it for the money that's in the contract.
There you go. I like that. You answered your question.
Good.
Thank you.
Yeah. I listened this time.
Go ahead, Ms. Cream.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Joe, for the fine presentation. Certainly, as we were chatting earlier, I've spent calmness of hours chatting with the team. Certainly, as you stated, it was probably two people that I was doing a job for, but nevertheless, I'm fine. I know Noa was going to be overseeing that, but he's got his other duties, but it's certainly well worth it because I know council is pushing forward for this, so I don't mind giving that time up to do this. And certainly, to answer your questions, I do have the, we did have the contract. We just wanted to wait to see because obviously as further down on this agenda, you see things that we need to shore up to ensure that we have that, then we will bring the, I will bring the contract. Joe has already vetted it. Their attorneys have already vetted it. It's ready to go. We, I plan to have a, I didn't tell you now, but we're planning to have a little study session sometime later this month. I'll bring that contract for the approval. It has been vetted, the prices are already in there, so we are good to go. The other, the thing with, excuse me, the other contract for 911, we're hoping to have that by January. That is what we've found out now, we're probably going to come under budget. You guys did approve that 1.2 million with the police department back in January, but those prices are still holding, and we hopefully will come under budget with that as we have chatted. So certainly, and the police department has been informed, he's been sharing the plans with them, the walkthroughs that they did. So we're moving right along with that building as well. They'll probably be simultaneously working together, and what I shared before when I was meeting with him is, as he stated, if we can get more local vendors, more local contractors, we'll be able to do both jobs at once to get in there. Certainly, we're going to try to reach out to them, whatever we can do to get both going. The last one is, excuse me, for the Fire Hall Historical Building, that was just something that we wanted to look at. Again, I know as council, you haven't budgeted anything, anything to that effect, but it is something that I believe both the chamber and Josh brought up as far as bringing up the revitalization of downtown. Right when I first started, that was the first meeting George invited me to, said, oh, we're doing this. Oh, okay. Well, this is something that I think is very important for the city to be kind of an anchor of downtown. If we can revitalize downtown, it will start with that building. And certainly that, I think a few people that would remember back in the days of the dances upstairs and certainly that the bar was being utilized and the kitchen and everything, we hope to bring that back, along with the trolley, we'll have that down there as well. So it is in the master plan of all this. It's certainly important, and it's an endeavor that I'm glad I spent a lot of time doing because it's something important for the city. And it's certainly important for you as a council to have, not only have that administration building because it'll bring back everything that we're working on, certainly the professionalism, the fact that a lot of people can just drive through their cars, it's going to be great for them. So there's a lot of benefits for this. George, I think it's 2025, but I can give you the exact figure, but that will be a really nice conference room, training room as well. They'll have a lot of onboarding. They'll have a lot of onboarding processes. Everything is going to what we had discussed. So with that said, I, I spent a lot of time, I, I know there are other companies out there. I told you back in May, I had, I was doing my due diligence. As I tell my family members, do your research. Well, I think I did my damn research a lot of times and spent a lot of time doing it. There are other companies and certainly they came through. As this gentleman shows what McKinstry is, he, like you said, he's given up 80 hours of his own time. I call him with, hey, and Parks and Recs will attest to that. He helped us pick out the heating and cooling and make sure that it met the qualifications. With the restrooms that we're going to do over there, same thing. So he's gone above and beyond just to help the city in O'Gallus. And I'm not saying that trying to sell the point. I'm just saying that sometimes, you know, you know, good companies, you know, good people behind that company. So I, I would just want to say that. So with that said, council, you have more coming up on the agenda regarding this. So it's certainly important. Once we move in that, that contract is ready to go. We will get that approved hopefully to hold on to those prices so we don't go over. Thank you, Joe. Thank you, council, for bringing this. Thank you, Mayor.
I got one question, Ms. Kramer. The, the grant that, that PD has 10.7 million.
One.
1.2 million.
No, was it 1.2? There's two grants.
For this building, it's 1.2.
Uh huh.
And we matched that.
But, but the, the other one doesn't, doesn't qualify or any of those funds going to be used in the reconstruction of what we're doing? Okay.
Yes, so we'll, we'll get the brick and mortar going so that will match up what they're trying to fit, put in. But the whole thing is getting the building ready so to get their second grant implemented.
Yeah, because that's another step that I think that it's been brought up in various meetings. You know, I know that the communication one is to have all entities involved, right, Chief? That communication grant is to have all entities involved in, in, in the radio system and stuff like that. PD, DPS and everybody? Yeah, okay.
Yeah, to answer your question, yes. And we've all, and when we visited, and I know they visited Sierra Vista. I went over there just to look at the scope of the building. But they did reach out to us, we're going to be their secondary and they're going to be our secondary. So once we get that going, as what Chief said, there will probably be other entities, Mayor, using our services, which will be good.
Which everybody wants.
Exactly.
Yes, thank you. Joe, thank you very much. I appreciate it. Next, we jump to C, a presentation regarding the North 32 final plot, a 32-lot residential subdivision. Mr. Tapia, order number 02025-11-035.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor and council members. This is going to be a presentation regarding the new housing, housing development in O'Gallus. This location is going to be on 1795 North Loma Mariposa Road. It's a small piece, 4.976 acres of a bigger parcel. It's going to be dedicated in this location, you can see on the screen. You can see right there, these are apartments to the northeast. And this is the portion of the property that's going to be exacted from the bigger parcel. On this parcel right here, that's South 32. They're doing some improvements on the street already. They submitted the building permits for the building already. On this corner, it's going to be potentially a 711 gas station. And as you remember, the hotel site is over here. So this area is going to occur quite a lot of activity, development activity in the next 12 months. But in this case, we're talking about this 32 new residential labs on this location. So, so the request is for the final plot. We went through the pre-application with the developer and the property owner. Also, we, we went to the tentative plot that was approved. Now, this is the final details of the final plot. The layout, complete layouts of the location of the labs. The access will be from Loma Mariposa. And it's going to have an access also from Loma Mariposa into the internal private street. At this point, they recommended to create a private street between those labs. So as part of the general plan, as you know, that we always talk about land use around the city, the general plan, the 2020, that was approved about close to five years, five years already, five years ago, includes a growth area. The growth area is designated to encourage new development, can be commercial, residential, industrial, but that's the intent of the growth area in the general plan, the overall land, land use. So this proposal meets the requirement of the create new opportunities. In this case, housing, which as you know, is highly needed in O'Gallus. So there's a lot of demand for, for residential development in O'Gallus. This is a map of the general plan on this location. The, the gray area, that's the, the O'Gallus growth area. The arrow is pointing to the location. So it's within the growth area as, as indicated in the general plan. So it meets that, that designation. This location also, because of the zoning classification, right now is multifamily. The single-family homes is also allows single, single-family homes as a part of the land use. This is a city, a city zoning map. The yellow areas residential, the brown multifamily, the blue areas industrial development. So basically on this, as you know, that the map for housing in O'Gallus is, is great. As we, we get many calls in our office regarding where is the housing, where can we live? As you know, also the new employment coming to the city with South 32 and other companies. So residential development is very important. So from our community development department, we recommend the, to move to approve, order number 2025-11-035, the final plot for North 32. A 32-lot residential subdivision, which is Exhibit A in your attachment and also based on the attached conditions, which is Exhibit B. And you can see on the, in this slide, that's part of the final plot conditions, requirements after city council approval. The, the plot cannot be recorded until they meet these conditions. That's part of the requirements. So that's, that's very critical after the city council approval. Any questions?
Go ahead, Councilor.
Has the project begun yet or have they broken ground?
Not yet because it needs to be approved by city council first. We, we reviewed the plans already, like the preliminary water improvements, the street improvements. But then it has to be approved by city council first before they move to the next phase.
So there hasn't been any ditches dug up or any?
No, not yet. They, they do some soil testing, but not, not upgrading yet. That's what will be our next phase.
Okay, so then I probably was looking at the wrong property. Looking at the map where you have the, the road going in on the cul-de-sac, is that just one entryway? Because if the house, the last house in the cul-de-sac is burning, how is the fire truck going to get there? Just one entry?
Yeah, it's going to be the entrance on the Loma Mariposa and come in this and there will be a cul-de-sac at the end.
Right, so there's no other entrance? It's just?
Not in this, it's not big enough to, even though it's 32 lots, 16 on both sides of the street.
So there's no easement for like the fire engines or the police or anything to?
Yeah, the fire department review it and decides on the street. That's why the cul-de-sac is big enough to, to turn around.
So there's just one main entrance?
Yes.
How many fire hydrants will there be around the area?
The requirement is every 400 feet. So I believe it's like a, maybe a chief, I think it's, it's two fire hydrants, but that's a requirement that has to be done during the improvement plans.
Well, you have the arrow, is that the easement on the top right? Is that an easement there?
Yes, an easement, but that's for the water line. During the fire department requires a loop to connect from Loma Mariposa on the south and also to the northeast to drain a loop for the fire, the fire loop, the part of water loop.
Who's the contractor for the project?
The contractor, they don't have a contractor yet. The property owners, that's 7659 property all C, which Jim Barr is the, the property owner. But the developer is going to be, come later to develop the homes.
Okay, one last question. Who's going to be in charge of approving the sewer and the water on this project?
The city will be reviewing the improvement plans after this approval. The city is going to be reviewing the, the water improvement plans, the, the sewer improvement plans and also the street.
Thank you.
Go ahead, sir.
Follow up to Councilmember Parada's question was, how, how long is the length of the street in the cul-de-sac?
Need to zoom in to the. I think it was 100 feet radius around it. And that was a requirement by the, by the fire department to go, to go around.
No, I'm talking the, the length of, the total length of the street with the cul-de-sac. Because I know there's a state statute that requires that you can't, you can't have a cul-de-sac long, there can't be a distance longer than, it's either 500 or 600 feet. Without having secondary access.
I don't have the bigger, the bigger map over here, but that's something that, do you know one that?
Yeah, let's double check on that because the last time I looked at it, it was 600.
Question for legal, so there's no problem with just with, with having one entryway with the homes that far for, for emergencies?
Well, again, that's why the state statute, there's a requirement that if, if the cul-de-sac is shorter than a certain distance, then you don't have to have secondary access. If it's longer, then you have to have secondary access because of that fire safety issue.
I know in Meadow Hills, one, where the new house of the, of the, of the council general of Mexico, I'm not sure whose house is it, that, that they have in Meadow Hills, which is almost in the back. That's, that's longer than, than what we're looking here. I know that. That is way longer than what we're looking here.
Yeah, the length is not that long, basically, on this.
So like you said, on the record, there, the, there hasn't, the project has not been begun. There's nothing.
No, right now it's only the final plot. The, the next phase is going to be the improvement plans for the development. Right now, council is approving just a final plot, the layout.
This is to approve the plotting, right?
Yeah, the plotting, the lots, the layouts. The condition that you see on Exhibit B, those are the next step that we're doing. The attachment, Mr. Estes, on the, you mentioned right there, the dimensions on the attachment there that you have, the Exhibit A.
What are you talking about?
The Exhibit A, that's the, the actual plot. But that's in the attachment of the report.
I don't see a distance for the road on the, unless it's in one of.
The ratings on the.
Notes. But there are also, in addition to, I'm trying, I can't remember what the state statute is, but there's also the international fire code, whatever version we have adopted, would have cul-de-sac requirements as well for secondary access.
Yeah, we're using a 2018 fire code and that was reviewed by, by the fire department.
They signed off on it?
Yeah, that's correct.
They signed off on this?
Yes, part of the review, we, we all the departments, we get together and review the plans. That's why the fire department require a bigger size of the cul-de-sac.
On general notes, item 10 says length total proposed private street is point, 0.16 miles, total miles.
Point 16.
Point 16. A public street. Public street is zero.
Mayor?
Go ahead, Councilor Montiel.
844 feet.
Yeah. Did you read that, Ms. Estes? Yeah?
The 0.16 miles is 844 feet.
Yeah.
So about 850.
So it's, 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 it looks like it's okay. So, Mr., may I?
Go ahead.
So, so that we can move along. So today, what we're basically doing is just approving the, the plot. You know, giving permission, if you will, to, to be able to build there. But then after that comes the plans, the details of the plans and so forth, right?
That's correct.
So all those little details can be sorted out with the attorneys and this, this, the owner, and they can all get together and sit down like attorneys do and talk about the requirements and making sure that statutes are followed and so forth. So tonight, it's just approving the, the plot, if you will, that's owned by this.
That's correct, the final plot. That's why the Exhibit B is very critical. The Exhibit B.
Yeah.
Attachment, because as part of the development standard code, require those conditions after council approval. Those needs to be met.
Yeah.
Prior to recording.
They can't break ground, if you will, without being approved at the council. And, and whoever is the owner, you know, I commend the fact that we just had a housing meeting and we talked about the lack of housing. You know, this community, it's a fact. And the, the, the fact that this, this, this company here is moving forward and being progressive about it, for me, it's, it's, you know, it's a, it's very welcoming, if you will, to the city, to the residents and so forth. And then they also, I like the way they, whoever did this, I don't know if you did it or not, but doesn't say who authored it. But you know, I, how far is El Centro from this, the Mines El Centro from this development? I mean, you don't have to be specific. I was just curious because I was thinking in my mind, the infrastructure, I was thinking about, you know, the, the, this person put here planning areas, it's going to, it's a city gateway. We have Mariposa, you know, the traffic there, we have El Centro and, you know, and it's, it's nice that somebody has thought about developing that area. Because that's where O'Gallus is going towards, it's already there. So, and, and are you going to be managing this project? What department manages this project? Do we approve it tonight?
That's why the department just.
You do. So you, you know, follow through with all the requirements and all of that stuff. So tonight's just approval of starting. So tonight's just approval of starting, allowing that plot to be developed, if you will.
That's correct, and very good point, Councilmember Montiel, because the, the area, like, that's why I mentioned South Thirty-two location.
Yeah, I saw that, but how far is it, Mr.? From each other, like three miles?
No, it's about quarter mile.
About what?
Not even a mile. Quarter mile at the most?
Yeah, quarter mile.
At the most.
So that's employment, the jobs will be created, but they need where to live. And that's, that's a key point, that looking for more housing in Nogales.
Yeah, of course, so it jives, you know, the idea and then, but I'm sure that the city of Nogales is gonna talk about, you know, traffic disruptions and, you know, what the committee expects and all that. We're gonna be talking later on in exec about, you know, the mine and some other aspects of it. So you're managing the project, I just took some notes there. So, yeah, I mean, this is gonna shape the future of Nogales in terms of housing and then providing that to the, the workers that need to be housed.
Yes.
On regards to the mining and so forth, so some economic growth.
Yes, that's correct.
Yeah, brings in jobs and all that stuff. Okay, got it, thank you.
Any other questions? Mr. Tapia, thank you, you know, took a long time, but you finally got it. Where, you know, Mr. Barr was able to plot his properties.
Good job.
And let me give you the explanation. This goes from, you know, Mr. Barr had sold where the gas station is on the bottom, then he sold to the mine. And the third step, when you have to do the third step, you gotta develop or structure the whole thing. And that's why, you know, they came out with the plotting idea. So that's, that's basically what, what we're doing. You know, plotting the whole property that Mr. Barr owns there. Barr, you don't like to say anything, sir? Thank you.
You were.
Yes, thank you, sir.
Huge vision.
All right. Thank you for your support. Not yet, not yet, but we'll go to orders. That's in orders.
I'm in a hurry.
All right, thank you, Mr. Tapia. Next, next we go to the presentation of the twenty twenty-five first quarter tourism activity report, presented by Olivia Ainsa Kramer for the Nogales Santa Cruz County Chamber of Commerce Tourism and Visitors Center. Ms. Kramer, go ahead, sir. Ma'am, excuse me.
Olivia Ainsa, good evening. Mayor and council, my name is Olivia Ainsa, and I'm the president of the Chamber of Commerce, Nogales Santa Cruz Chamber of Commerce. And I'm here to respond any questions of the report that I emailed you. And I don't think that we have time to go ahead and go over all of them because they were twenty-four pages. But also to share the mile, another milestones that the Chamber of Commerce has been accomplishing. This is something that we are really proud of sharing with the administration, with the council, mayor, and the public. As of, as of last month, the Arizona Department of Tourism was certifying the Nogales Santa Cruz County Chamber of Commerce and Visitors Center as an official center of the Arizona Department of Tourism. Which is really, really proud that we're doing that because it's a center, it's the hub of the community. And with that said, I wanted to go ahead and let you know that with the partnership that we're gonna be doing in collaboration with the Arizona Department of Tourism and Herman Global Incorporated, we are launching the campaign Untravel, Unfollow the Crowd. Okay? That is something that we're gonna be doing with this company as well as the Department of Tourism to discover Nogales Santa Cruz County and discover hidden gem destination for visitors to come to the area. I think it's very, very important. This campaign is gonna be serving as a social media platform to highlight hiking, biking, campaigning, RV exploration, and outdoor adventures. And this approach was particular, is a particular well-suited for Southern Arizona, with Nogales and Santa Cruz County sending us as a perfect hidden gem destination. This is something that after I send you the report, we were notified and we're gonna be participating. The cost of that campaign is over ten thousand dollars. But with the partnership that we are gonna be forming, well, we are forming with the Department of Tourism, the cost for the Chamber of Commerce is gonna be three thousand dollars. The other one is gonna be upset by the, upset by the Tourism Department. So that's something that we, we're very proud and I think it's gonna help a lot of the Department of Tourism to showcase Southern Arizona and not only that they always promote Bisbee or Benson, now it's gonna be Santa Cruz County, which is really amazing because we need all that help that we can. Right now, as you saw on our report, the numbers of international visitors has been going down. And with that said, is because of the Canadian visitor is not coming to Santa Cruz County, traveling to Mexico. So right there, that's where we are seeing the decline in visitors. However, national visitors and state visitors, they, they keep coming. But unfortunately, they don't wanna cross into Mexico. That's something that has been hurting the economy in Mexico. And that's why we also visited the mayor for Nogales Sonora because we wanna see if we partner with them and how we can promote. Because they need, they ask us to go ahead and see how could we support them in promoting Nogales Sonora. But unfortunately, the visitors are not very happy that they could go ahead and visit Nogales Sonora. So with that said, that's part of the tourism report that I have for you. But also on the business side, okay? Thanks to Hector Tapia and, and Mr. Kramer, that they put us as a partner on the new program that the city of Nogales is using. It's helping a lot, not only because it has been very well received by the new businesses. What the chamber does is that we do a welcoming email where we thank them for opening the business in either the city of Nogales or Santa Cruz County, and we welcome them, and we offer any assistance from financial assistance, so planning, marketing, branding, whatever they need, we're here to go ahead and help them. And so far, as you saw on the report that I sent you, we had different businesses in there that we were able to assist. And that's something that is making a difference for them. They wanna feel welcome, they wanna feel appreciated, and they wanna look for the resources that we can give to them. And that's the main purpose of having a good and active Chamber of Commerce, which I represent. I don't know if you have any questions, anything that I can answer?
Go ahead, Ms. Montiel.
I just wanna mention, I know Ms. Jean out there is going to present right now the finance document, but, so, I agree, you know, the, the, people don't wanna go, wanna cross, and you could look, you could see the, the numbers of the bed tax. It's been decreased half of what the revenue was the previous month. So people are talking, you know, people are reacting to whatever is out there, right? So from, you know, sixty-three thousand in one month, we went down to thirty-one thousand. I mean, that's a lot. So it is, it's significant. And it hurts the city of Nogales in terms of bed tax because, you know, that's a big component of our budget and, you know. So, yeah, unfortunately, hopefully, in the next few months, it gets better. You can only hope, we'll see.
We're hoping that with the new revelation on businesses relocating or opening here, they also can, can be the ambassadors of promoting the community. Because the visitors that we get, I mean, when they stop by and they see everything that Nogales has to offer or Santa Cruz County has to offer, the comments are very positive, very positive. But unfortunately, the media, politicians, no offense to that, okay, but the bigger politicians are not using the border towns for something positive. So that's why, as a matter of fact, we have a tourism committee. And next Thursday, we're gonna be having a meeting where we're gonna go ahead and brainstorm and see what else could we do to go ahead and start doing and being more proactive on how do we participate in another conventions. But all that, it needs money, so we wanna go ahead and see how we're gonna go ahead and approach all that. Because we need to help not only the hospitality sector, but also restaurants, and then the rest of the community too, because it's a domino effect. But that's something that, that we are gonna be needing help from all of you to go ahead and, and support any initiatives that we, we, we start doing. And not only because it's good for, for, for all of us, but also for the city of Nogales because of the revenue.
Mayor?
Go ahead.
One of the things Mr. Bonilla brought up that was quite interesting to me is that, you know, how are, how is the city of Nogales going to utilize that position that earlier Mr. Josh talked about, how the mine will fund an economic developer director, whatever title they're gonna give that position? So you are, you are not part of that, or you are part of that?
No.
You're not. So that's what I talk about, the missing link. We go in circles and circles and circles. So, you know, and we, like, my friend, good friend, Ms. Lopez here, and we try to do all these events at the city of Nogales. You did a wonderful event just recently that we all attended. She did two of them this week, this past week, and it was wonderful. Because those, those are the events that we have to offer to the residents. Because after all, the, you know, in-kind funds are, you know, paid by the taxpayer. And so, and all the other events that the community business people do, you know, it takes money and it takes effort. But going back to, that's what I'm talking about. We can say and we can go around in circles, we need to work together, and we need to work together. But city of Nogales continues to be the hub of Santa Cruz County, it is. And so, that's one thing, I'm hopeful that we have discussions. And I, I, I like Mr. Bonilla's comment about that because I, maybe I just didn't know about it. I, I know about it because I read in the international that that was one of the positions that they planned to fund. But there's that missing link, you know, how, how do we take advantage about maybe funding our own economic developer director, you know? And I'm sure my colleagues here have, have vision and they're gonna, we're gonna come up with some, some ideas. But it's going back to how do we tie everything together to benefit the taxpayer, to benefit the residents, so.
Right now, with the initiative that the city of Nogales approaches and participating with the community development with Mr. Tapia is the director, I think is, is helping a lot. Because the businesses before, they didn't even know where they were going, what was happening or nothing like that. Or for that said, if they needed any financial resources, they thought that it was just their money. And that said, we have great partners, which is great because they are being able to help them, not a hundred percent of the time, but some of the cases, and they feel that we're doing something, that we're helping. They feel like they're not alone. And also, I think it's very important that, that they see that we appreciate. And when I say we, we, the chamber, the city of Nogales and the community, we appreciate that all this is happening. And we don't wanna lose any of them. And I have to say, I do my research and I find how many businesses have closed in Nogales. And I guess Jean, or I'm sorry, the new directors, financial director, they might know, but it's very little, the businesses that are being closed. And the ones that are being closed, when we do the exit interview for them, we, we notice that is because they're moving, because something happened internally. But it's not exactly because they wanna close the business because Nogales was not there. And that's something that makes a difference.
I, Mayor, I also, may I? I also noticed that, we also give you the taxpayers' funds at fifty thousand dollars to your entity too, to the chamber. But I also noticed that you just don't service the people that have memberships. You also service people that don't have memberships because we pay that, you know, the city pay, the taxpayer pays that fifty thousand dollars. So you're kinda servicing anyone regardless if they're members of the chamber or not, which is very good to know. Because I see it in your report.
That's, that's something that we have to say. Not because they're the members of the Chamber of Commerce, we do not service them. But once they see the benefit of how we help the businesses, that's when they make the decision to join the chamber. That's something that, I mean, is good because they feel that, oh, I don't have, as a matter of fact, right now, the board of directors approved that we're gonna start working with payments, a payment plan for anybody that wants to join. Let's say that if you don't, you cannot pay the membership, we're gonna start making a payment plan for them because we really wanna work for them. We wanna, we work for the businesses and we represent all of them. It doesn't matter if you're a member or not a member.
Okay, thank you.
And also, I just wanted to mention, because I think Josh mentioned also about the letters of support that they give. I just wanted to make sure that all of us, we understand, not because we are a visitor center, tourism center, we also are a Chamber of Commerce and we participate a lot with advocacy. We have a great partnership, which is with the U.S. Chamber of Commerce. And as you already noticed on the report, we give, it's on page twenty-four, we give letters of support. We participate advocating for any initiatives, any rules, any policies that could affect the business community. As you already knows, or notice on page twenty-four, we do participate for anything that is gonna affect or benefit the, the, the business community, and especially in Santa Cruz County.
Thank you, and thank you, Ms. Kramer, for doing a great job. I think the, the problem right now, you know, and everybody should know, is, you know, the scares of, you know, what's going on, going on with visas and the retention of visas, the retention of, you know, afraid of getting questions and maybe losing their visas. I think that, that's hurt us a lot, you know. We've lost the, you know, the cattle crossings right now, we, they, there hasn't been any cattle crossing through Nogales. I'm gonna say nine months of the last eleven. You know, they, they have always been great supporters of, you know, bed tags and all that, Ms. Montiel. You know, every time somebody from El Bosque or just from the south comes to sell their cattle, their cattle gotta stay three days in quarantine. So they stay three, two, three days here in Nogales and all that support for the city, you know. But all that has hurt our economy down here.
And it's not only, not only the problems that we're having as a United States, but it's also the problems that they're having in Mexico, like the Canadians. They are not traveling to Mexico. Remember, this is the high season that used to be for us. People traveling into Mexico for the winter times, winter months. Right now, they're not. So it's both ways, it's affecting whatever is happening in Mexico as well as the United States. So right now, we have all that. But that's why we need to be proactive and start working on different ideas that we could go ahead and maybe change the perception or change, or be more innovative. That's what we need.
Hopefully, I, I just saw eight people from Obregón last night that were over here just, the produce season is coming about, it's been a good weather. So hopefully, they start coming and visiting, you know, their warehouses and everything. So hopefully, it pickups a little.
And one thing that I would like to mention that right now, going back to your question, Councilwoman Montiel, the membership, the businesses are noticing the role of the chamber. Like today, we had a, a member that they are gonna be needing some, a company that could be installing solar panels. And right away, we made the connection with three local businesses that might be able to help, okay? Which is really good. I mean, we promote the events, I mean, because we know how important is to go ahead and the people to, just to see something positive, not so negative at all times.
Thank you. Any other questions? Appreciate your hesitation, thank you.
Thank you very much.
And keep on doing a good job, thank you. If you have some, Mr. Kramer?
Yeah, thank you, I just wanted to add some clarification to what the chamber is doing with Hector Tapia and the group and certainly the business office is, and I know three of you here have always been, all five of you, but certainly three of you have pushed for this six months ago. You brought it up about getting an economic development person, we did not have that. But we certainly have been pushing that with, with the Chamber of Commerce, with Hector and the business office. We've met in this room at least twice in the last six months. It's called Isella, and I presented that to the Port Authority as well, and certainly the chamber is aware of it. But the chamber is also gonna be the one stop as well, as well as Hector's group when we do move over there. His group is gonna be over here. So they're gonna be much closer in the proximity of business development and business licenses with the fire department and us right all, right in the area. New business development will be certainly a key to it. But the Isella program is that the chamber is also gonna be hosting a computer, they have a computer, it's online program. But when you wanna start. But when you wanna start a new business, say some people from Idaho come down and say, we wanna start a bicycle shop. If they're at the chamber, they can go right in and start getting their applications in. And with that said, we're gonna add, there's a timeline where everyone can see, including the person from the bicycle. It's called ECELA. They'll be able to see the timeline. So it's gonna be that much more efficient that we're gonna start getting the businesses because we need to cut down this six months, 10 months lag time. We need to be a lot more efficient. We've already chatted about that. We didn't score well, and Hector knows that. We need to cut that down. And certainly, the chamber is gonna be a part of that. We are gonna be part of that. And it's our business development group that is certainly working on this for the last six months. It's important that whoever wants is doing this, the fire inspections, Ken LaRiva has got two people now. You remember when he had just one? He's got two inspectors now that are qualified to go out for the fire department. Certainly with Hector's group, we are pushing hard to work and getting more timeline. Before, it used to be emails and phone calls. Now, the appointments will be set up here so they know exactly when, the day and time, when they can show up for the inspections. So it's no more of the email phone calls. So we're trying to make it a lot more efficient. So the City of Nogales is not in the business of giving them delays, but working with the chamber, working with our business office and everything to that effect. We'll make it a lot more efficient. So Mayor, I just wanted to bring, thank you for bringing that up because it's important that we are already been pushing the business development. We are certainly looking at that. If you wanna fund a position, council, I'm going thumbs up, do it. I'm all for that. So if you wanna allocate more money, it's certainly important because we could certainly help us on that as well because we've, we wanna push that. And it's, it's important because that is our bread and butter for this. It is our everything. We depend on the sales tax and the little portion of bed tax that we share with the county. We also are, it's important. So Mayor, thank you. I just wanted to bring up, because we need the clarification, because we were talking about it. That Olivia brought it up and Hector kind of touched on it a bit. But it's certainly important that you know as council, this is what we're doing.
Go ahead.
Quickly, if I may. Mr. Kramer, also, it really helps everybody. It's a win-win situation for everybody because we have to be progressive. The City of Nogales has to think that way. And, and it also helps the directors. Because it also is very frustrating for them to kinda try to coordinate, you know, the, the business, the business part of it, the city, the chamber, the port, you know? It, it just makes it gonna be, it makes it easier for everybody and everybody's gonna win and, and expedites this whole process that's been so slow for years and years. You know, you hear it over and over, we've talked about it. Oh, businesses don't wanna deal with the City of Nogales because it takes forever to process it from the very beginning to, to public work. So kudos for you, congratulations for getting this program going and Mr. Tapia and the finance directors. Thank you.
On that sense also, you know, there's always a lot of things, you know? You know, I've been trying to, yes, the city is, you know, doing it and trying to get better. But there's a lot of things that we don't control. Let's say, you know, the, what is the, the safety, you know? You know, if a restaurant, the permit for, 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 in, goes to the county, everybody blames the city. You know, and, and so we do have to work together. We do have to work together. We have to, you know, collaborate together. And, you know, there's things that, you know, the health department, that's what I wanna say. The health department is, is the county. And, and everybody, something happens with health department and, you know, they blame the city, but we don't, we don't control it, you know? So that's why we also have to work together and, and make things happen, you know? And that would alleviate timing also, to make it happen faster. So, thank you.
With that said, everything is in here. And there is a public access to it. So people could see if there's really wanna be finger pointing of where it sits. So where the permits are sitting, you could actually go look to say, hey, why haven't you guys shown up for two weeks? Why aren't you helping this business? To bring up, it's, everything is transparent.
Yep.
So there's gonna be a lot more openness about what we're doing here. So that's also important on this program.
Thank you.
I'm sorry, Mr. Kramer, but I just wanted to add that that has helped the chamber too because they, sometimes when we go and visit that business, they don't know what is going on, what is it holding. By having access to the system, we can go ahead and relay the information to them. So we wanna make Nogales and Santa Cruz County a business-friendly community. So, thank you for that.
Thank you.
What I'll do is council and chamber, and certainly the port with Hector. We'll probably bring a presentation, we'll see where it goes. But we'll get it to you if not December. We'll do one in January on how this whole system works.
Appreciate it.
Okay.
Thank you, Ms. Kramer. Next, we go to item number six, financial monthly report. A September 2025, Director Jacqueline Andrade, welcome to your first meeting. And Deputy Director Jean Mohamad, welcome, Ms. Andrade.
My name is Jacqueline Andrade and I serve as the Finance Director. And Jean will be presenting the fiscal year 2026, September 2025 financial reporting this evening.
Good evening, Mayor, and members of the council. What you have in front of you and up here on the screen, what you have in front of you has been updated from what was originally published online. So you'll see a few different numbers. So stop me if you have any questions compared to what you see or what's up on the screen.
Well, I have a question.
Oh, sure.
When I talked this year, would I already review the last three things?
There's only a couple numbers, just a cou- it's the sales tax numbers. When I did the slide and then when I, well, when I did the paperwork, the sales tax numbers I forgot to put from last month to this month. So yeah. So it's nothing like, oh my gosh, what happened? It's just a couple little numbers. Oh, no, not, not quite that bad. So in your first table, that's your Table A, and that's your general fund. So for our revenues for general fund, we have collected $7,296,830, which is 25%. And through September, we should be sitting right at 25%. So general fund is sitting right where it should be. For expenses for general fund, we are sitting at $9,795,395, which is 24%. Also on Table A is our shared revenue. And shared revenue, we have collected $2,314,403, which is 24%. If you move on to Table B, this is the one that you'll see that the numbers are different. We actually have collected $1,414,647 in sales tax for September. It's $735,456 more than September of last year. So we're sitting $120,394 more at this point than last year. So we're finally in the positive when it comes to sales tax. Took us a couple of months, we got there.
And we've, and we've been hurting, you know, like Ms. Montiel said, bed tags, the government shutdown, all that. You know, the lack of visitors and all that, so hopefully, we'll get better.
And we always have to remember, for all of us that live here, shop here. You know? I know it's easier said than done, but we live here, so let's shop here.
So Jean, in August, how come we have a big difference in August from July and September?
So remember last month, I mentioned to you guys, actually, I mentioned in July 1st, that we get, we base the money on the reports based on when it hits our checking account. Not when it processes, because if somebody purchases something on July 31st, we may not see that for like the next month. It depends on when it hits our checking account. So in July, we had hardly anything deposited to the city until August. So August looks like we had $2.6 million in sales tax coming in, where part of that actually was in July. But I've left the table as is because that is how it came to the city. So we can see that. So like with the bed tax, it looks like we went down half. But part of August was actually from July. So it was, they're actually here in July. We didn't see the money till August. So that's why the, the report looks the way it does. But overall, we're finally back in the black on sales tax. If you move on to Table C, this is our general fund based by accounts. And the blue ones, we've put this in there so you can see that the blue ones are still the ones that are above. They're 25%. Most of that is because of contracts. So if you look in the encumbered line, you'll see some large numbers. And that's because we have the POs done, but the payments haven't been done. But they're contracts that we pay throughout, oops, we pay throughout the whole year. Table D is our HERF and overweight fees. So for HERF, we have brought in $819,310, which is 28%. And for overweight fees, we have brought in $88,941, which is 30%. Sure.
Go ahead.
So here on the, on the HERF, you have 28% of it, and we've only, well, yeah, we've used 20%. So we're kind of not using the 28%, right? Is, am I reading it right? That we're, we're using the 20%, we're at 20% out of the 28% that's budgeted.
Well, yes. So, and when you get to the expense side, we've actually used 20% of our entire.
So we're spending less than what we're bringing.
Yes.
Good. That's Mr. Kramer at work. Spend money.
You will notice on there that we do have that $6.2 million in grant revenue. That is what came to you guys last month. That is not included in the budgetary numbers because it, it wasn't budgeted amount. It was the grants that came in that we talked about.
The state.
State, it was through the state. So that's why it's in there. You'll see that on there, but you will not see that as part of that 28%.
Those are the three paving projects.
Ah, good to know. Thank you.
Then for expenses for HERF, we have spent $687,266, which is the 20%. And we have yet to spend anything on our overweight fees. Next is our sewer account, that's Table E. For sewer, we have spent $869,173, which is 27%. And we have expended out $557,089, which is 24%. Next is the water, Table F. We have received in $961,954, which is 29%. And we have expended out $1,366,751, which is 33% of the budget. And the final table is sanitation. We have brought in $744,574, which is 27%. And we have expended out $702,587, which is 19%. Are there any other questions on that part?
Put all three together, we're around 47 below.
Yes. And we have to remember, some of the biggest expense is under the sewer and the water. And those were the two with the payments that we made July 1st. That always looks like it hurts.
Yes.
Okay. Then the next part is the business licenses. So in business licenses, we have 2,776 active business licenses. We had 15 cancel or suspend during October. We increased by 14 new ones. And we also had seven one-day special event licenses. Those are when they have like the special events downtown. They don't have a normal business license, but they're only gonna do like a little pop-up event. So they just get the one-day event. And then, of course, with our new ECELA program, all of the business licenses in progress or in process are going through ECELA. So those numbers I don't have any longer. And then payouts for October, we had three. We had two in PD, which totaled $13,094.35 in sick and vacation. And one in human resources for $27,961.29 in sick and vacation. Questions on that part? And then the final bit is the water and sewer report. We have 6,164 active utility accounts. We have 73 that are on current contracts, which total $59,777. It has decreased from last month. We also have 130 delinquent accounts that are in the Valle Verde area, which total $363,271, that has increased $17,501 from last month. Any questions on that?
You lost me on that one. You lost me on that one.
Jean, on the, on the sewer, the water rate for the Valle Verde residence is different from the water rate of the city, right? City residents?
Yes, they do not follow our water rate. So they have their own.
So, so how do you, what's the formula that you come up with to figure out how much water, how much sewer bill the residents of Valle Verde?
So they base it off of an average, based off of the residential that we have in Nogales for residents. And then we do one for the commercial also. So it's based off of an average household use. We can't use their numbers, so we have to use what we have. So it's based off of an average.
When you say residents, you're talking about, there's residents in, in Nogales that are serviced by the City of Nogales? And then there's residents that are serviced by Valle Verde?
The ones that are serviced by us. So we use our average to create the sewer average for Valle Verde.
So if you were to use the Valle Verde water company, it would be a lot higher, right?
I'm assuming yes, because I'm guessing theirs is probably higher than ours because they're a private company.
Okay, thank you.
Now, if you would like me to raise your sewer, I will. We had that discussion yesterday.
If you can lower my water rate, yeah, here.
Question.
Go ahead, Councilwoman.
Ms. Jean, on the accounts that it says on this page, that there'll be legal action taken, where are we on that?
So it's been probably about six months or so since they've had an updated list. But since we just had this big jump, in the next couple of days, since we just ran the new bills for the end of October, that entire list will go back to legal and see, and then legal can decide how they're gonna pursue, pursue. Like if they're gonna go after just the larger ones, do they wanna hit the smaller ones first? It'll be, kinda be up to legal. But yeah, since this one just had a big jump, I wanna make sure that we get right back on that and we can try to knock some of those down.
Thank you. Go ahead, Ms. Montiel.
How we're doing with the billing water to the residents? Is it getting better? I know you're in charge of it now. Are people getting thousands of dollars of, of water bill?
They are not.
Okay.
We have a new system in place within our six little people, where there's multiple eyes checking everything that leaves the city. If one happens to slip through, it might. But for the most part, you know, we're, we're getting down to where it needs to be. We have done a lot of changes in there. There's been a lot of updates, just with like, even down to customer service, the way we talk to people. Like we're doing a lot of different educational type things to help our customers feel a little bit more comfortable coming and approaching us. I have had, I couldn't even count them, an hours that I've sat with customers where they just were a little confused. So let me talk to them. So take them in the conference room, we sit out there and we talk, and we talk, and we talk. And they always thank me. And thank you for what your people are doing. Thank you. So we're, we're starting to see a big difference. So a lot more customer service, talking to people, not scared to talk to people, and a lot less complaints.
So you do notice that with, with the changes that happened at the management level, that they were for the betterment of this community?
Absolutely.
Yeah. That's good. Thank you, Mr. Kramer, for making those changes.
Thank you. That's it. Thank you, Ms. Jean.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Jacqueline.
That's the last time we'll hear from Jean, because next month, Ms. Andrade.
Next week, move to item number seven, orders. Eight, consideration possible action on order number 2025-11-033, an order of the Council of the City of Nogales of Arizona authorizing a budget transfer of a amount not to exceed $300,000 from the city manager's capital to the general fund administrative service building for the continuing, continued renovation.
Second.
Any discussion?
I have a comment.
It's, it's just a comment or, or something that I, I've been thinking the past couple of days when I, when I saw this. When we did our, when we're in a budget talks, and this is just a comment, we told our employees that we couldn't give them a pay raise. And I, if I remember, it was like seven hundred thousand, I think it was three hundred thousand for employees and four hundred thousand for Nogales Police Department and the Fire Department. And we told them no, because our insurance premiums went up. I found it, I, you know, I, I find it kind of hypocritical, uh, that we had to tell our employees, no raise for you, however, we're in this project and between this agenda item A and B, it's five hundred thousand dollars. And I just think the optics are, it's a hard pill for our employees to, to, to swallow. We told them we had to be frugal because our insurance premiums went up. But now we have this project here, which I believe we have to finish. I, I, I am for it, but it, it's, it just seems a little bit hypocritical for us to just tell our employees, no, not for you this year, you're going to have to wait. And here now, we, we're going to move five hundred thousand. I just, it's just a comment. Call my attention, I've been thinking about it for a while now.
Thank you. Any other questions? Well, that said, all in favor? Aye. All opposed? Motion passes. Item B, consideration possible action of order number twenty-two-five dash eleven dash zero three four, in order of the council of the city of Nogales, Arizona authorizing a budget transfer of a amount not to exceed two hundred thousand from the general fund reserve to a general fund administrative service building for the continued renovation. Any discussion? All in favor? Aye. All opposed? Motion passes. C, consideration possible action of order number twenty-two-five dash eleven dash zero three five, an order proving, an order of the city council of Nogales, Arizona approving North Thirty-two Final Plot, a thirty-two lot residential subdivision on four point nine seven six acres located at Seventeen Ninety-Five North Loma Mariposa Road.
Some of, second.
Go ahead, uh, Ms. Wapiti, you have something?
Yeah, Mayor, in consult, the condition number, number, the exhibit B includes a condition of approval. We need to add, like the city attorney mentioned, to add a secondary access. We already have an access estimate on the northeast. Well, based on the number of lots, we had thirty-two lots, but we can work with the, with the developer to create a secondary access. So one of the conditions, um, on exhibit B, condition number three, it can be added, uh, to add a secondary access using the northeast access, the water access, uh, to create a secondary access. Right now, it's an eastman for water, but that can be expanded to, to create a secondary access. So that will be a condition.
So that'll be amended to, to the order, uh, with the condition of it goes, uh, has, has a secondary access, uh, where the water line is?
Where the water eastman is located.
On the roundabout?
That's secondary, yes.
Yeah, okay. Uh, I'd like to amend that with, uh, with that condition. Do I have a second? Thank you, uh, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Motion passes with the new, uh, amendment. Let me go back and to the original? No, right? My amendment oversees the, thank you. D, consideration possible action of order number twenty-two-five dash eleven dash zero three six, in order of the council of the city of Nogales, Arizona approving a communication facility eastman agreement and assignment of tower-related ground release with Chief Towers LLC with payment of four hundred and ninety-three thousand six hundred and twelve dollars applied to administrative, uh, building services for continued renovation. Any discussion? All in favor? Aye. All opposed? Motion passes. Moving to eight ordinances. A, consideration impossible action of ordinance O-two-zero-two-five dash eleven dash zero-zero-six, an ordinance of the city of Nogales, Arizona amending the Nogales City Code, Chapter Nine Finance and Taxation, Article One, procurement by amending Section Nine dash sixteen type of contracts to add a new provision for job order contracting, providing for durability and establishing an effective date.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? Aye. All opposed? Motion passes.
Actually, Mayor, if we could.
Yes, sir.
Do a quick.
Roll call?
Roll call, just because it's an ordinance.
Uh huh.
And it looks like it's unanimous, so.
Yes, it is. And I, I apologize, Legal, uh, one, one thing I have not mentioned, uh, since we started, Councilman Doyle is not present, uh, because of, because of, uh, being like you are now, sick. But, but, so roll call vote, uh, Mr. Bonilla?
Aye.
Ms. Menendez?
Aye.
Ms. Montiel?
Aye.
Vice Mayor?
Aye.
And myself, aye. Thank you. Next week, move to call to the public. Okay, uh, Ms. Anayka Dero Leon, thank you for your patience, uh, please, turn on the mic and state your name and address, and you've got three minutes. I'll give you, I'll give, I'll give you four, for the wait.
Good evening, and thank you for the safe space where people can come and talk to you directly. Patients will always be there for you guys, so thank you.
Thank you.
Now Diana's going to confirm the address.
Nine-one-five, West Paul Bond Drive.
Good evening, everybody. Uh, Major and Councilman, Councilwoman. On behalf of the Planning Committee for the Second Annual Children's Museum Festival, we would like to extend our sincere appreciation and gratitude for the support and participation you guys had last year in our event. Thanks to your generous contribution, our community was able to enjoy festivities safely and successfully. Thank you very much. With your help, we're not just building walls in our museum, we are building futures. We are pleased to see how this, um, committee and likes to improve safe spaces for the youth of this community. The museum has the same intention. As we move forward, the foundations have been laid, and the museum will be nearly ready to be filled with exhibits and the community participation. Throughout the continuous generosity of community members, businessmen, and the city's support, we are moving closer to creating a space where learning and imagination will thrive. In preparation for this year's festival, we are once again seeking the city of Nogales partnership through the donation of Public Safety Officer Service Hours on November twenty-second. Your continued collaboration ensures that this event remains safe and welcoming celebrations for families in our community. We deeply value the city's ongoing commitment to community, community engagement and youth enrichment. We're looking forward to continue this meaningful partnership for the success of our museum. We are new to this, and we have lots of questions. That's why we don't only seek for your participation with your donation, but to continue to build this partnership where the museum, businessmen, businesswomen can come to the city and expose what is it that we need and try to seek for your wisdom. So once again, it's not only the donation, it is this safe space where we can come and have all these doubts that we have into how we're going to be doing this museum moving forward. That's our main goal, that's our main concern. So thank you for your time and consideration and dedication to this shared mission.
Thank you. And I'll, I'll just say one thing, Mr. Kramer said about a special session, uh, li- later down the month?
Wait a second. On November the twenty-fourth.
Um, we'll do it before. Okay, we'll try, we'll work it, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Thank you.
Next, we move to executive session, uh, motion? Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Move to executive session, thank you.
Thank you.
I'd like to adjourn from executive session and reconvene. Move to number 11, discussion and action items. A discussion on possible action in kind of processions for Lady Guadalupe Novera on December 3rd through December 11th with the exception of December 6th, there will be no processions. The procession starts at City Hall at 6:00 p.m. with the exception of December 11th starting at 9:00 p.m. and will end at the parking lot of Sacred Heart Parish. Estimated participating range being from 100 to 150, a 200 per day cost totaling $1,800. The participants of one police car to open the processions and one police car at the end of processions. Do I have motion? Second, any discussion? Go ahead, Vice Mayor.
Question for Chief Jimenez. Doesn't A.D.A. do some of that, what do you call it? Because I've been to those processions and I've seen the A.D.A. truck following the people and then he parks in the front and goes back.
Traffic control?
Yeah, well, not traffic control, but I think he's overseeing the...
Go ahead, Chief. Mayor and Vice Mayor, you are correct, but that's been in the past. There's been different, I guess, support that they've had. And this time, they actually provided the in-kind request and approved, or the process, I should say, through Parks and Rec and now here for your approval. So we've done it in the past, other occasions when it was approved through the city manager's office in the past. But there was a timeframe where other departments, like the Sheriff's Department, and A.D.A. has come to support it. But this one is going through the in-kind approval process and will be doing it.
Thank you, thank you, Chief. Anything else? All in favor? Aye. Oppose? Motion passes. Be discussion possible action of any kind of the Corre Corre Santa fundraiser from the Nogales International on December 13th from 9:00 a.m. to 1:00 p.m. Race will start at Carum Park and end at War Memorial Stadium. Estimated 100 to 150 participant closure, excuse me, 100 to 500 participants. Thank you. Closure of Morley Avenue and War Memorial Stadium from 9:00 a.m. to 1:00 p.m. Total cost for fire Nogales police officers will be $984.75. Any discussion? All in favor? Aye. Oppose? Motion passes. See discussion possible action in kind for Veterans Parade from the Veterans of Foreign Wars on November 11th, 2025 at 10:00 a.m. Estimated participant would be around 350. Cost would be $1,500 to include meals. Any discussion? All in favor? Aye. All opposed? Motion passes. The discussion possible action in kinds of the Veterans Day Parade from the American Legion Post 23 on November 11th, 2025 from 9:00 a.m. to 4:00 p.m. Estimated participant would be 300 people. Cost would be $1,500. Parks and Rec creation crew parade and lunch event. Podium and speaker microphone for honor wall and chairs needed. Nogales Police Department traffic control on parade.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? Aye. All opposed? Motion passes. The discussion possible action, Mayor and Council ratification of the appointment of Daniel Trevino as Human Resource Director. Go ahead, Vice Mayor.
I move to approve the appointment of Daniel Trevino as Human Resource Director.
A second.
Any discussion? All in favor? Aye. All opposed? Motion passes. Number 12, congratulations, Mr. Trevino. Welcome, welcome. Mayor and Council report on current events, Mr. Bonilla. Ms. Melendez.
First of all, I want to thank Jessica and all the personnel from Parks and Rec. They helped us at the event Saturday. It was, I mean, unbelievable. It was a lot of work and thank you, the city, for also sponsoring the event. And then also, I want to thank Mrs. Montiel, Judy, and everybody who helped get the liquor license for Aztec riders. It was at the last minute, but it's a good purpose. So that's why I pushed to have it and thank you. Thank you very much for helping. And now we're going to start with the Casitas Navideñas. So one after the other. The Casitas Navideñas, and I already have 18 people registered. So I only have a few casitas left. Plus, we're going to have five casitas right here in front of City Hall. And Mr. Kramer, you're responsible of giving them to whoever you want. Of course, it's going to be Parks and Rec, the police, the library, the city, and fire department. That's all. Thank you.
That's great. Okay. Yeah, okay, thank you, Mayor. Just so everybody can know, in the public that's still watching this movie and will watch it on YouTube, and for my fellow council members here, we have the Christmas Light Parade, the Parks and Rec and police and fire, everybody is on board. The flyers are out, the applications are out, and hopefully we'll have 50-plus entries like we did last year. So that's about it. And it's on December the 6th at 6:00 p.m. and same round as last year. And downtown Nogales is where the judges will be lined up. Thank you.
Councilwoman Barra.
Just a reminder, for the Veterans Parade, November 11th, we're going to start lining up at the old post office at 9:00 a.m. And the parade will start on time at 10:00. And followed to the honor wall where the mayor will give us one of our guest speakers as well. And from there, a lunch at the VFW. Thank you.
Thank you. Vice Mayor.
I attended the Fiesta de Muertos event done on Morley, and it was very impressive, you know. It was a little bit different, you know. The shows that they had, a little bit of opera, folklorico music, and everything was good. Everybody there was happy and they're having a good time. So I want to congratulate Mrs. Melendez for her hard work. I also want to thank Mr. Noé García because, you know, Grand Avenue has never looked so good, you know. And I see people working even on Saturdays and after 5 o'clock, you know, then they're putting a big effort to make Nogales look beautiful. Thank you. That's all, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. You know, for me, saying, you know, shout out, great event on Saturday. Actually, it was the last one to leave. It was a great event. A great event. Jessica, the whole crew, P.D., everybody, you know, did a great job. Really, people really, really enjoyed it. I heard it was over 900, you know, people from the committee there. Circle of Peace had a great bike race, you know. Again, thank you, Jessica and P.D. for all your participation and all that, you know. Those events wouldn't happen if the people wouldn't get our support. So I really appreciate that. Then, you know, you beamed it through it, Vice Mayor, but the cleaning of railroad side, Kramer himself have, you know, pushed on that, you know, with Lupe Valdés. And I actually saw Omar Monca today here. He was here, he's a 2000 Union Pacific rep. Said hi to him and thanked him for giving us the opportunity of clean, you know. It's the first time that I can remember that they let us clean that close to the railroad. So, you know, everybody's noticing that and it looks really, really nice. I think we should continue that. And, you know, everything, you know, we're doing, I think people are liking. Let's keep it up. You know, Jessica, when are the parks going to be open? That's a million-dollar question right now. But you have a date yet? Yeah, that's what I thought. Oh, Memorial Park, Little League, Pleasure Park, Sterling Park, they're all closed because of reseeding. That's a normal, everyday question, you know, from everybody, you know. But hey, they want to be green grass in January? That's the only way to do it. So, but thank you for all that, Jessica and Parks and Rec. Okay, any future agenda items?
No.
Just remind everybody to get excited to be for the parade. You got something, Mr. Kramer?
Yeah, just, thank you. We'll probably look for that either Monday, that Tuesday before Thanksgiving for that study session. It'll be in reference to what we talked about, about doing facility requests. And I will bring Miguel Michael back, Vasquez, regarding the rate studies.
Okay.
So it'll be either that Monday or Tuesday. I don't want to do it on the Wednesday before Thanksgiving, so we'll do it Monday or Tuesday. Just an FYI. Okay? Thank you.
Got a question. Let me look, am I called there? Okay, or maybe...
Well, I always open up for...
Or maybe next week. Okay.
Certainly, you can participate. If you're not, certainly, you can participate in that way. I'll get all that information to you prior.
Okay. All right, so with that said, I move to adjourn. All in favor? Aye. Me adjourn. Thank you. Thank you, everybody.
Thank you.
Mr. Trevino, thank you.